...special meeting, City Council Work Session of October 6th. And Marcia, I think you're scheduled to give us an overview and introduction.
Sure. As identified in the agenda that was sent out earlier today, we're here to basically have two discussions. The first is on building materials for structures within the Bridge Street District. And Mark Ford will be here to make a presentation on the building materials, specifically the cement fiber. And this is the same presentation, only a shortened version, that was presented to Planning and Zoning a couple of weeks ago. And it was felt that it was a good presentation and provided good information to help in future decisions. Also, looking at the Taller Flats project that has been proposed, that council has looked at in the past, as well as P and Z. And part of what we are here tonight to discuss the key elements of the development, and then also key elements that would relate to a potential development agreement with the developer if we were to move forward. And as we discussed previously, with any of the developments in the Bridge Street District, and more of the significant developments like this project, there will need to be a partnership between the city and the developer with regard to infrastructure needs that will be required as part of the development of Bridge Street. So that's one of the main reasons that we would have a development agreement with the Castor Company if this project were to move forward. Also, the administration and the Castor Company is requesting feedback from council on the proposed project with the goal of determining whether this project should be moving forward, and should we look at preparing some type of letter of intent or an agreement that would indicate council's approval to move forward. And part of that has to do with the amount of time that's been invested in the project, as well as some of the time limitations that the company has with regard to commitments on land acquisitions. So, the first presentation is Mr. Mark Ford.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Mark Ford of Ford and Associates Architects. As Ms. Grisby stated, I've been asked to give a abbreviated presentation of a presentation that I made, I think about three weeks ago, to Planning Commission, and basically just outline some of the features or qualities of the cement fiber wall panel systems that are in the market today and currently being used throughout the central Ohio area. So really not advocating for or against, just basically informing of what these materials are, so you all can get a glimpse of how they are used. So, if I can do this. So again, the cement fiber wall panels is the subject. Basically, there's just a few different types, three types of materials we're going to talk about. The first is probably the most common that you're familiar with, is just going to be typical lap siding. You're used to seeing it on wood houses, you've seen it on multifamily and commercial structures throughout the community. It's currently being used right now on the Residence Inn, just across 161. In fact, I brought a piece of that, and I can pass these around later if you want to see them. But basically, you know, it's a, you see that fiber reinforced siding, you can see it's quite thick. And the nice thing about these products is that they're dimensionally stable, and they are rot resistant. So that's why you see them a lot in commercial projects these days. I think the rot resistance, unlike wood, it will deteriorate in time. Again, you can get these prefinished or field finished. This happens to be a preprimed, and then you can also paint them in the field as well. The other type is where it's a wall panel system, which are larger members, larger pieces of this material. And they have two types of installation methods. The first is with exposed fasteners, and the second is with concealed fasteners. And I have photographs of each of these things. So here is something you're probably all very familiar with in terms of seeing. This is the cement lap siding, cement wall panel lap siding. And again, I've used just some different illustrations showing how they are, I brought some illustrations how they're used. Again, these are field painted, they're installed similar to wood with any wood product. They use the one by corner trims, and they use the one by trims around any door or window openings. Here's another example here, which mixed with even different types of panels, where they're made to look like shake shingles, and again, mixed with the one by trim panels. Again, another large multifamily project, just the different style of board. They've even used different sizes of boards on the lower section of the building versus the upper sections of the building. And I think you're all fairly familiar with this type of use. And last, there's another large mixed-use project that uses the material. And I thought what was interesting about this, it's not only has the lap siding kind of in the center of the building here, but it uses the wall panel systems in combination to make the more featured elements at the corner of the buildings. Here is a use of the lap siding in a single-family residential unit. Again, looks very much like wood siding. And here it is in a commercial application, a single-story commercial building with the lap siding, the horizontal joints, again, very familiar with, and then mixed with some larger panels further on down the right, on the right side of the building, to give it more of a contemporary look. And one last, this is just another multifamily project with the lap siding, and then the one by trim pieces. So this is installed just like you would with wood. You nail it, you cut it, and paint it like a wood product. You can get it prefinished, in fact, you can get it pre-stained to look like cedar or different other wood finishes as well. Talking to different manufacturers and looking on their specifications, if you do get it prefinished, it has a 15-year warranty on the finish is what they specify. So, wall panels uses a rain screen. This is with exposed fasteners. We've actually used this product at the recent, the Infinity dealership up on Corner 160, or Sawmill and 270. Here you have, again, larger panels. You primarily see this on large mixed-use projects or commercial office structures, hotels. It's quite prevalent in the marketplace today. You can get it, again, these are all prefinished panels, so these come to the job site all finished. They're not, these have not been field painted on this particular project. Here's a little closer look. And again, the reason I wanted to make the distinction is, here you can see, these are the fasteners, and they are spaced approximately 16 inches on the center, because they need to go into the substrate or the wall framing behind it. And then next to it, you can see they've actually used the combination of the lap siding with this particular project. But I thought this was a good illustration to show how the panels are joined, and then also the exposed fasteners. This is a larger structure as well, hotel project that has the exposed fasteners on it. And then they use, what they did is where the boards are joined, the panels are joined, they have a trim piece that covers the joint. So it's an exposed, or a lapped trim piece. Here again, just another photograph showing the combination of the lap siding, but then with the exposed panels in a larger scale. The last type that I want to run through some photographs is the concealed fasteners. Now this is the most expensive of the types of products, because it is more labor-intensive in terms of its installation, and has more parts and pieces to the installation. But here you can see it used on a commercial structure. These are the panels up here, it has a brick element, but these are the panels. And typically, what you'll see them in, about an 18-inch by five to six-foot-long panel, depending on the manufacturer. So they cover, also can cover a wide range of colors. You can specify any paint manufacturer, and they can pre-apply the finish at the factory. What's, again, nice about, whoops, what's nice about these is the fasteners are concealed, everything's contained. They're really what you call a rain screen system. So, what they do is they join together, and I actually grabbed one off a job site that we're involved with, and you can see it has a beveled edge. And what happens is the next piece sits on top of that, so you've got a brick tight joint. And you can see there's actually a basket here, which creates the weather screen from the exterior, and creates that weather protection to the wall cavity behind it. There's actually a small, neoprene basket that fits each joint together. What's the life of that basket? You know, they warrant the product for 15 years, so I'm going to have to assume it's within that same 15 years. It's a good question. But I look at the total assembly, they warrant the assembly for 15, so I would have to believe it's that. Here what you see though, one of the things that we talked about at Planning Commission, and I think which's key with any product, is really the quality of the installation. You know, we actually brought some photographs of bad installations of this, and these happen to be good installations, and just like brick. You've all seen good big brick jobs, you've all seen, you know, bad brick jobs as well. So I think the key thing on these type of products is really looking at the detailing of the product, as well as the joinery, which goes to Mr. Reiner's question, is how these are attached, and how will that attachment wear in time? Again, they're very dimensionally stable, so there's not much movement, like you do get in wood, where it shrinks, and you know, as the moisture content or the humidity changes, the wood will grow and split and check. These will not do that. But what we did focus on, and I'll just hit on it real briefly here, is the corner detailing. When you get to these larger panels, how are they joint at the corner? Because you can field apply a one-by-trim, which is appropriate for the lap siding, but maybe not so much on the larger panels. So what the manufacturers do, and I have some close-ups of it. And I just brought these because I thought they show a very contemporary use of this material, and the range of color. Here, you know, the material's being used with actual metal panels on the balance of the building. And you can see what they've done as well, as these with the larger panels, they're actually turning the color and making a continuous corner trim with the panel. Again, here, more muted colors, but the same type of detailing, where they're using a range of values with that same product. And it could be all one color, there's no need, you know, there's nothing saying it has to be a mixture of colors and sizes. But this is what I want to show. I got this illustration, I thought this was very telling, in that you can see, as I was showing on this beveled edge, how they lap together, you can see it creates a fairly tight joint. And again, it's a weather screen, so you have this, and then you have the wall cavity behind it. But these actually have pre-manufactured corners, and I think that's a nice attribute of these materials, because they're factory-made, and it gives you a very finished presentation on the corner of the building. And then here's actually another pre-manufactured corner trim, is actually a metal riglet, or corner detail, in which it's a formed metal element that these pieces then abut into at the corner. So it kind of gives you a reverse corner. But again, it's very nice, it's very streamlined, and very contemporary in its effect. That's really the, again, I reduced the number of photographs per the request of staff, but just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview and answer any questions that you might have. Again, you're seeing these materials more and more. I think the fact that you can get them prefinished, you know, it's, is one of their benefits. I think the fact that they're dimensionally stable. One of the questions that came up, actually at Planning Commission, was, you know, the choice of using this versus a brick product or a stone product. And one of the nice things about these, if you look, if you think about the illustrations I showed, they basically all can be attached to the exterior frame of the building without really any impact to the building foundations. Where brick, you know, you would have to create a brick ledge and a wider foundation for it to sit on. With these, because they're very thin products, they basically are, you know, cladding, or just like a wood product would be. And so you don't have the increased costs and the detailing at the base of the building that you would with a masonry product. So that's another one of their, you know, it's not only the benefit of the rain screening, but also the simplification of the building details as well, and the building structure, makes the building structure lighter. So if you have any other questions, or I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Counsel?
I wondered if you brought, you at Planning Commission, you had a photo of a project downtown. It had a lot of the lap siding, it had a white.
Yeah. I took those out.
Yeah, I wish we could have seen some of the bad installations, because that was illustrative too, to know what to look for.
Yeah, the, as Ms. Lee said, one of the illustrations I showed was a project where it was a series of multiple buildings that I've been acting as the owner's rep on. I'm not the architect on it, but I go out and do monthly inspections. And one of the things I've observed is that the first building, the contractor really struggled with the installation of, and that project actually has all three types of products on it. And you could see where they struggled in fitting the corners, and there were some chips, and where you nail through it, or you screw through it, and you have to patch that. You know, the manufacturers do have patching kits that you're to blend, but these were all prefinished panels, and so you could see the patches, because, you know, it's like painting your car, as I always did as a kid, you know. You couldn't quite get the black to match the black, or the gray to match the gray. And so you could see spots. And so as we discussed at Planning Commission, would be, a lot of these products are actually more suited probably to field painting, because of the fact that as you install them, then you can paint and cover any imperfections or chips or things like that that happen during the installation process. But you're right, there were, and they're, you know, they are susceptible to cracking if you force them in the place. I had an illustration of that as well. And to the point is, is, you know, it really depends on the installation and the quality installation, just like most products.
Is there any kind of certification process? Like, the roofers to do certain roof lines have certification, they can't put it on unless they've gone through the manufacturer's programming?
I'm not aware of any for the installers. I do know that they do have ASTM testing standards for the different manufacturers for the product itself, in terms of the thickness and the content of, you know, how it's fabricated. But in terms of the installation, I think it really becomes a matter of the quality of the general contractor and the subcontractor, and their familiarity with the product.
Who else?
Yeah, I have one question. What happens, what happens in 15 years when this product wears out, deteriorates? What's the remedy?
Well, I don't think it's a matter of it deteriorating. I think it's a, the 15 years is really the color fastness of the product when it's factory painted. The product itself, you know, it's a, it's cement with fiberglass fibers in it, it's compressed under extreme heat and pressure to make it into the board it is. You know, there's a product that we dealt with years ago called a turnit, that was made by GAFS, or GAF. And it's, it was like on double village center, it was a shingle, it was the manufactured shingle. And what I've observed on it, we use it, we've, my firm, we use it out in Gehanna quite a bit on a big project out there called Stone Ridge. And the product itself doesn't fail, it just fades. You know, it's ultraviolet lights will break down, particularly when it's on a roof surface. But I haven't seen that the product itself has failed and chipped and, you know, rotted away. It's just basically, it just fades.
So it's just painting then?
Yeah, that's what you would do, is you'd paint it.
Even if it's factory-applied, it can still see it?
Yeah, and I did talk to one of the manufacturers, you can go back and repaint it, you can field paint it. It will, you know, take the paint. It's just the factory application gives, just saves you that step in the initial construction.
Who else?
Yeah, I had the benefit of the more expansive presentation at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, you know, that was a great presentation and very enlightening to me. A couple of things that I took away from that, one, and you mentioned it again this evening, was that installation would be critical, as it is with brick, as well, and probably any product. But I was also struck by the price per square foot to install. You said it was relatively close to brick. The difference in the overall construction cost being, as you mentioned this evening, was the wider foundation and so forth, and then if you get up to, you know, above four stories or whatever, you know, so the cost increases. But that, generally speaking, the notes that I made, that it was roughly $14 to $16 for the cementious, and $18 on average for brick.
Yeah, the one thing that I've learned, and I've talked to some more contractors since then, the $14 to $18 range that I got was for the larger panels, the concealed fastener panels. And that actually can go up to almost $22 a square foot, some of the, if I can actually back up here, try to do this. So this type of a product, you know, with the very tight seams, the larger panels, if you get those, that can get up to almost $22 a square foot installed. The lap siding itself can range anywhere from about $750 to $850 a square foot, depending on the quantity that you're buying, and how many squares and things like that. So it actually is less expensive than brick. And then what I bought in between is the cost of the exposed fasteners. It's about half, you know, halfway between the two, because again, it has less, you don't have the tracks behind it that you have to clip into, you just basically screw it in to the face. Similar to almost like these wall panels you see here on the sound walls, sound panels, you just screw through the face. So, the lap siding itself is not the $14, it's actually closer to $750 to $850.
Right.
Okay. That was one of the things I've learned since my presentation, because I, when I was trading emails with these different vendors, they all gave me the pricing on the larger panels.
Right. And as the discussion ensued, a couple of the things that you said that we might consider, in your presentation as it is this evening, you know, was, I would say unbiased, I mean, you know, you were just giving us the facts. But one of the things that you said that we might consider is an approved list of installers. And another thing to consider was perhaps to limit its application by both percentage and to higher portions of the elevation, you know, so that we're not seeing it at the street level.
Yeah, one of the comments, actually, I remember that discussion, was, I think it was actually Ms. Lee looked at the one photograph and asked what the lower material was, and I believe it was cast stone. And I think that's what started the conversation about the use of this material close to the ground. And I've seen it used close to the ground. I think that you actually mentioned a project that you had gone to and seen, and weren't real happy with it. And again, I think it's appropriate, it does, it is somewhat abuse-resistant, you know, because again, you can see it's cement. I think the biggest thing is how the joints are treated, so that it gives a nice clean look. You know, these buildings take it down to the ground for a great deal as well. I think, you know, it's like everything else, it's how it's designed and how it's used. So it's hard to, I can't say black and white, you shouldn't ever use it for this application, or you should, it really depends on the project design and how the material's being used.
Right. Thank you.
I think it's the fairest.
Another thing that we talked about at Planning Commission, Jeff Tyler happened to be there that evening, and we talked about how to ensure a quality installation, and, you know, is that the planning and zoning department, is that the building inspection department? And he talked about perhaps having the ability to enforce installation standards, and I guess he was going to get with legal and planning, and talk further about that, because, you know, as we've seen, the installation is very key. But, you know, what strikes me is the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance that's going to have to be done. So, thank you.
What's the current price of brick and artificial stone and real stone? Do you know roughly per square foot, fly to?
Well, I know in a commercial application, we always use the rule that brick is going to be about $18 a square foot, you know, for a wall, for a wall assembly. The manufactured stone is probably in that $12 to $14 a square foot range. And again, it depends on the application, if you're scaffolding, you're weather protecting, you know, those kind of things, how high up you're going. I know it's one of the conversations we had, the nice thing about this product is you can go higher than, you know, traditional brick, without having to re-leaf ledges and things like that. But, you know, everything is right in that kind of high teens, I would say. Depending, you can get brick, as you know, there's a real range in brick as well, you know, you can get brick that's $260, you know, $260,000, or, you know, $380,000. And so you're right there is almost, you know, a 30% increase, just in the cost of the brick itself.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Marcia? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, the next item on the top, on the agenda, is the discussion on the Taller Flats project. And I'll let Terry start, and then Darren Meyer from MKSK is here as well this evening.
Thank you.
As counsel may recall, this is a project that we began working with this developer, actually in the latter part of 2013. So it's been some period of time since we've started exploring. That's not unusual, I think, some of the Bridge Street projects, as we ourselves learn our codes and the layouts, and how some of these things work, and where the subsidies are needed, has kind of required quite a bit of back and forth. And then as we test them through presentations with council and planning commission to get more feedback, we start to understand kind of what the options are. Just to orient you to the sites that we'll be talking about, this is the Bridge Street District in general. What's shown here in brown is the kind of Phase 1 portion of the Thomas site. This is Taller Road going through here, kind of the curve in Taller. And this, which is also part of the proposal we'll be presenting to you tonight, is a current city-owned piece of property, which is a piece of green space, providing conjunction with the Sycamore Ridge development years ago. This lighter purple color here is the buyer's Chevrolet site, and the city purchased that earlier this year, because John Shields Parkway will bisect that site, and with the Chevrolet dealership closing, was a good opportunity to acquire that under good terms and conditions. And this is the remainder of the Thomas property in this area. Just to show you with the Bridge Street zoning code, the Phase 1 piece is shown for residential purposes, and this is shown for park, consistent with kind of what it was dedicated for years ago. The street grid contemplated in the plan, a couple of things here, does show the east-west connection of John Shields Parkway, and we'll have Darren discuss later, kind of the important role of that as the major signature street through this district that provides a significant looping through the area. Also shows the grid as it begins to get contemplated in this area, that needs to be the framework around which these buildings occur. Interestingly, you'll also see the green that goes through this area with kind of variable width to it, because of some of the property lines and other things that are limiting it along its route. Closer look at the sites, this effectively is the, I think, the piece that the developer has under contract now, which is the Phase 1 of the Thomas property, the western end of the site. This is the green that the city had years ago, the buyer's site, and the remainder of the Thomas property. You'll note a couple of things, notice here, you'll notice how the property jogs through this location around the Graystone Muse project. And initially, when some of the alignments of John Shields Parkway were looked at through here, they were lined in such a way that provided almost no developable depth through that area. You get a little extra depth by virtue of the configuration of the Thomas property. That'll come into greater light here as we proceed. This is a concept that was shared with council as part of its annual goal-setting last February, just when the project kind of first emerged. And there was a series of kind of comments and concerns, and some negative reactions to the project, some of which related to the green space, kind of isolation of the green space within the project. I think the architecture itself was a concern to council, and kind of repetition, lack of variety in it, and the layout in general. So this was kind of the first, one of the first iterations that emerged. There was feedback from Planning Commission and others early on, but this is what was shared back then, as an outgrowth from discussions that began latter part of last year. This is the project, as we'll bring it before council tonight. You can see a lot of changes in the development. It's still the Thomas property primarily. We're now showing this piece being a piece of that, and we'll kind of discuss with you why we think that makes sense. It's organized around a very large public green along John Shields Parkway, the John Shields Parkway project. Council's seen a presentation with regard to what the character of that signature street should be, and a lot of what we've begun to look at on this site has informed this layout. When we showed that previous layout to council in February, that was prior to our presentation in April, of the John Shields Parkway and the green, and the concepts that needed to develop along there. So as this project was moving forward, we subsequently began the process of really looking at this road, kind of understanding its character, understanding the character of the greenway along it. And you'll see here, for example, how this road begins to pull more to the north, so that we can create some space between John Shields Parkway and the property to the south, so that we can again, try to frame this corridor in a meaningful way. And again, Darren will give you some additional feedback on that. This does lay out the grid in ways that we support and are comfortable with. This does contemplate the street and the greenway, we believe, in ways that are consistent with the vision. There was a variety of architectural... There was a variety of architectural styles that were presented also to planning commission and council through some earlier renderings that we'll share with you shortly too, that we think were dramatically improved as well. The site, as you see it here, contemplates four hundred and twenty units on the entire site and provides this as the major green, just under two acres, and then a series of greens that would occur along the frontage. Want to get a little more depth with regard to the city piece of property that's located to the west. As we began to look at, is there a way to help frame John Shields Parkway so that we don't have this major hole or gap in multiple locations in this highly finished or expensive street? We asked, and this is stuff that kind of Darren helped and MKSK has helped us think through, the developer if they'd be willing to explore that with us, and they were. What you see here at the end of the day is the right-of-way contemplated for John Shields Parkway, and this connects directly with the piece under construction that we have today adjacent to the Vrabel property. So that's being constructed today right here as part of that development agreement. And then continues to the east. The green then continues through this fashion, and then this is actually the piece here and here that gets exchanged to the developer. At the end of the day, the, this acreage here, plus the green space obligation for this development, equates to the green space being provided by the developer. So effectively, we're trading this land for this green space here. That plus the green space that their project demands equates the green space that we're getting, if that's clear to you. So essentially, the land swap is handled by virtue of the amount of green space that's provided and the amount that's offset by virtue of the trade. I want to, one other item I want to touch base on here that I think is important. Planning commission and council have seen both of these. Planning commission, I think, had a couple of concerns that I want to touch base on. I think, like council, they were supportive of the larger green to the north. They expressed concerns with the larger green shown to the south, which was part of the developer's submission at that point in time. The planning commission and the staff, I think, both felt something was needed in this southern green to kind of frame the right-of-way through here. The planning commission's thoughts that began to emerge after their review were that they'd like to see something reserved for, I think the predominant thought, something reserved, maybe that would be mixed use in character as a way to integrate something other than housing into the project, even if we're set aside because it's not feasible at this point. I think it's a belief of staff and the developer that that's not feasible, not likely, given this location here, and would prefer that the edge, the framing, be built as part of the project. And again, we'll have Darren kind of give you a sense of that as we move forward. With regard to the street intersections and such, those were brought into conformance. As we began to look at this scenario, we tested kind of different street sizes on the secondary streets here, whereas this is still consistent with the signature street. We're looking at something a little narrower in these residential streets, and Darren will give you a little highlight on that as well. But we feel for the nature of the development and kind of feeling very residential in scale, they're very appropriate and workable. Again, these were the illustrative perspectives that were shared with council.
Excuse me, Terry, could you go back to that previous slide, the one before that?
Sure.
I recall in the minutes from the planning and zoning meeting that the commission had some concern about what I think they described as three orphaned buildings?
Yeah, at that time, I think you had a big green space down here, these parts, and these three down here. I think that was what they were making reference to, was the three orphaned buildings.
So this layout has changed from the one that...
The only change, the difference between them, they have now shown the right-of-way as I think it was suggested, but not shown at the time. And these buildings have been moved back an additional ten feet so that there's now a forty-five foot depth through this section. And again, Darren will give you some more detail on kind of how that helps frame this area and provide an appropriate green through here. But I think those are the three buildings that we're making reference to.
And from the staff perspective, those buildings are necessary or preferable because they help to frame John Shields?
Yeah, I think the notion that this isn't going to redevelop in the near term and that this would be left open and green, kind of backing into this area, would, in our perspective, create really a major hole in John Shields Parkway. We've got some graphics to kind of depict what we think that would do. And we think the benefit of framing it with those buildings, since all of these streets are organized around blocks, we're not trying to make it feel like a project. We think it's appropriate. When eventually this does redevelop in the future, it'll have complementary buildings hopefully on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Again, these were perspectives that were generated to kind of show the character of the buildings. I think Joe Sullivan described some of the different architecture and the way they were going to create ends to buildings that turn corners in better ways and kind of the power of this very large green in the middle here. And those, from our perspective, were generally positive. So in terms of what we're looking for, requesting this evening, it's not detailed architecture. It's still generally stuff that would be consistent in character with these earlier renditions. What I'd like to do at this point is have Darren Meyer from MKSK, who kind of led the streetscape design for us and also looked at in the context of the greenway along John Shields Parkway, describe a little bit of the things they looked at for us as they helped kind of massage this layout with us and the developer.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're going to briefly recap just a little bit of the planning that we looked at in June in the council session, and then sort of fast forward to the current development plan and look at how that applies and how we've been working with developer during that span. This is an image of the proposed thoroughfare plan in the Bridge Street District, and most of our plane graphics will be oriented the same way. So in the center of the page, you have the Souda River running north and south. This is two seventy to the north, Sawmill here to the east, and you can see the proposed John Shields Parkway moving through here. This is the general area of the Toller Flats development. As Terry mentioned, John Shields Parkway, which is this upper portion of the loop right here with a future potential river crossing here as well, is part of a loop system through the district, which plays an incredibly important role that we discussed previously. With the core amenities of the Bridge Street District being historic Dublin and the river and the future park along the river, these are really the destinations for the entire two-square-mile district. And you can see that this loop road, which is oriented east to west, is really well situated to pull users, and we talk about a walkable district, to pull users from all edges of this district into these core amenities. And we also looked at the fact that the planning that went in, it's a little bit difficult to see at this scale, the planning that went into this extension of the greenway along John Shields is a great amenity, a great tool in order to bring people from the perimeter of the district to these core amenities. So we had looked at a half mile and almost a one-mile walking shed here to the perimeter of the district, which is between a ten and twenty-minute walk. So you have some pretty healthy walks to get you to these core amenities, and to do that in a way that's safe and memorable and comfortable is really the heavy lifting that's important with this loop. And it's one of the reasons that we had looked at this as being a signature street that has a level of finish and a character and a comfort level that will help achieve that walkability. When we looked at the green in a little bit more detail, I'm going to flip the view here on you. This is, we're looking west along John Shields Parkway, so we're sort of floating above Village Parkway and Riverside Drive is at the top of the page here. We wanted to, at the time, this does not reflect any specific development proposals, but we wanted to put a little bit of architectural edge in place here to discuss some of the principles that we wanted to consider as development occurs along this stretch of John Shields Parkway. The first one, and arguably the most important, is to have some continuity with the edge along the green. When you're creating a walkable district, it's absolutely essential that you have strong, attractive, active, transparent, interesting frontage on the street in order to encourage that walkability. And we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. The second principle was to create a public way. When you have a green that has some front doors on it in order to not make this feel like the front yard of these individual units, we want to have a legible system of circulation that's very clear that the public is allowed and can access and can use this space, that it is a public greenway. The third is to anchor the experience. The length from Riverside Drive to Village Parkway is almost three-quarters of a mile, is thirty-five hundred linear feet. So in order to have an experience, again, that can pull you through this length, we want to have a variety of experiences, some width to the green, some destinations at the midpoint, some destinations at the end. So we want to look carefully at how we can modulate that experience and create really a variety of environments along the way. And the final principle that we discussed is engaging the street and how we can make sure that where we have cross streets and we bring people into this linear green, that they've got a safe and understandable and legible way to access it. So these were the four principles that we had discussed in June in terms of development of the greenway, and wanted to move into the current Casto development plans, we can see how these have applied. This, again, is a plan view with the Souda River to the west, two seventy to the north. This is Sawmill to the east, and this is a figure ground of what exists today in Dublin in this geography. So you can see Toller Road exists, Toller Ridge here, this is Sycamore Ridge Apartments and Greystone Muse. We have none of the grid, none of the redevelopment yet. When you overlay the proposed thoroughfare plan for the Bridge Street District, you can start to see how that grid interacts with the existing footprints for some of these developments. And this is John Shields Parkway moving right through the center here. These are some of the farm buildings and outbuildings on the Thomas property. From a planning standpoint, the Bridge Street District code says that this greenway is an average of sixty feet in width and a minimum of thirty feet. And so we've shown here, just as a diagram, the idea that as a planning construct, this is the amenity that was put in place along the thirty-five hundred linear feet of John Shields Parkway to really encourage great redevelopment on this principal frontage street. And in January and February of this year, when some of the initial proposals were put forth by Casto, this is what emerged. We talked a little bit about the green, which was up here, which is really more oriented as an internal amenity. We had some redevelopment along John Shields Parkway here with the potential future redevelopment here to the east, these pieces on this side. And then, as Terry mentioned, because the property lines to the west here on Sycamore Ridge sort of bump up a little bit and to the east here with Greystone Muse, we had a few areas where on the south side of John Shields Parkway here and on the south side of John Shields Parkway here, we were not able to have a developable footprint. And this is one of those critical aspects when we talk about framing the edge of the street, where having that active developed edge is critical. There's actually, it's pretty common to hear that in planning literature. It's interesting to look at some of the studies that have been done in terms of how people use these public spaces and how they interact with blank facades and open areas. They'll, everything from stopping to make more cell phone calls against active edges that are more comfortable, to perceived safety, perceived comfort. The idea of having front doors and windows and active edges along this stretch of John Shields Parkway, wherever it's feasible, is really critical in terms of moving people along this stretch. And what we'll see in some of these developments, you know, the Casto development as it emerges, is you'll see clubhouses and swimming pools and some of the typical kind of parts of suburban redevelopments. What we anticipate to be, to happen in the very near future is that the primary amenities for the tenants of these properties and almost all of the redevelopment of Bridge Street District is going to be the river, it's going to be the Riverside Park, it's going to be historic Dublin. Those are the amenities that we want to protect, those are the assets that we want to leverage for the district. And in order to do that, we want to make sure that these users can get there, and having these gaps, and again, some gaps here to the east were something that we wanted to test and see if we could fill those in a way that was feasible. So when you apply the current redevelopment plan, you can see that the green has moved from sort of an internal oriented amenity to something that fronts the street and is part of this larger greenway system. You can see with slight shift in the roadway that we're able to accommodate some development to the east where you have the Greystone Muse pushing against this edge. You look at some adjustments to the width of the greenway here, where you can have a consistent edge along here. And again, as Terry mentioned, the Bridge Street District code calls for an average of sixty feet in width with a minimum of thirty. So we have in this area at the western end here, a minimum of forty-five feet that's proposed right now. We did look at a little bit of a setback here, back from the forty-five, in order to capture potentially some of the mature trees that are on the Thomas property. When you look at the entire east side, the sort of light industrial flex-based character of some of this, the mature trees are few and far between, and they really add immeasurably to the character of the development, the community and streetscape. And so to have the opportunity to look at capturing some of these, and again, when we talk about anchoring the experience along this three-quarter-mile length, having some mature vegetation, having some different characters could be a real strength. In terms of the streetscape, this shows an image that we looked at in June of the signature street, which is what is proposed for John Shields Parkway. You have asphalt streets, you have some brick in the parking lanes and in the sidewalk, and some planters in the sidewalk. This shows the district streets. Again, you have the brick paving, which serves a stormwater function here in the parking lanes, and we move to concrete sidewalks with open planters. And this shows the signature street how it's coming together. Again, this has faded back a little bit, but I'm moving my laser along the river here. This is John Shields Parkway. This is the first piece that's under construction right now at the Vrabel Skilled Nursing Facility. And just to the west of that, that's being built as part of Riverside Drive, we have another block of John Shields Parkway being constructed. And what's currently proposed on the Toller Flats development is that John Shields Parkway could be constructed all the way to Village Parkway. So at the conclusion of those three phases, you'll have a continuous, you know, a street that's been constructed to a great level of finish from Riverside Drive all the way to Village Parkway.
This phase, how long will John Shields Parkway be at this point? How, where is it going to be built to?
This phase would leverage that entire length that he mentioned.
Okay.
Because we own the buyer's site to the east.
All right.
And the site to the west.
Terry mentioned, as we started to look at some of the internal neighborhood streets, we looked at what the amenities would be on those streets relative to the signature and district streets. So you can see on the top, this is the images proposed for the district streets. As you move internally and you have more residential-focused neighborhood streets, again, we have the, you can see just a little bit up here, but we have the asphalt pavement and the roadway maintaining the granite street curb. We have more traditional tree lawn with some breaks where we have some stoops and walks coming out. And again, this is not a specific development proposal in the background, but this gives you an idea of how the character of the street, of these internal residential streets, what are termed the neighborhood streets, relates to what we looked at in the streetscape standards previously. This is a little bit of an aerial view. You can see on the right, this is the district street where we have the asphalt pavement, the brick and the parking bay here and the open planters. And what I'm showing you just for reference are these two streets again. So the top street is shown on the right, and the bottom street is shown on the left with a tree lawn. The reason I wanted to show a different view is to show you the difference in width. So this is a sixty-five-foot right-of-way for the district street. For the neighborhood streets, instead of having the dedicated street parking bays, there's still street parking proposed on one side, but we've reduced the pavement width from thirty-eight feet to twenty-six feet in this proposal. And then, lastly, and I'll leave this up, and we can move backwards for any questions as well. This shows you an aerial of what's existing today, a little bit of that stretch that we talked about at the west end of the project here, where we were working to work in some redevelopment. And one of the last points I wanted to leave you with, when we talk about why we would work so hard to create some redevelopment sites where we have what we're terming these gaps in the streetscape, is that walkability, we mentioned, is incredibly important. It's a principal frontage street for very good reason in terms of having as much frontage as we can and that active edge. But the point that I hadn't mentioned yet is that urban green space and urban parks drive positively real estate value. And there's a significant investment that's being made in the streetscape of John Shields, significant investment, public investment that's being made in the green along John Shields, and those are to stimulate and encourage high-quality private development. So to make those investments and have gaps and where we can get that quality development and really leverage strong-built edges, I think is another one of the key components that we want to see if we can string those together with some more continuity.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of that presentation? Okay?
Just to bring closure here to a couple items, based upon that analysis...
Based upon that analysis, kind of supporting the plan that we brought before you, the other element of the development that we look at, then, is its taxable value and what it leverages. And in looking at this project and working with the developer, figuring out where the gaps are that kind of need to get filled, and I guess in response to Mary Lee's question also, with this Phase One project, that would leverage the full-length construction of John Shields Parkway from Village Parkway to Toller Ridge. So that would be a very significant length of this finished at the high level. All these streets that you've seen also have the decorative street lighting that we've talked about before, street lighting as well. Among the reasons for the advantage of that, one is just that much of a Signature Street getting built, that level of finish is significant to beginning that important internal circulator. But from a traffic perspective, you've seen as Emerald Eight comes online, your studies have indicated that Toller, where it intersects Riverside Drive, the Riverside Drive, will get limited at some point in the not-too-distant future to right turn in and right turn out. The easier we can make it get to this road sooner, the better on there, so we think there's real value in that. And given the fact that the other remaining pieces of this are either under construction or under design right now, creates a real opportunity. So it would leverage that improvement. The other contribution would be, there'd be an initial contribution by the developer towards the street construction. The city anticipates, based on its analysis, that there'd be a contribution of around $2.5 million towards that internal street system structure as well. That would be capped. There would be minimum value guarantees on the part of developer and all the traditional things, but those are the biggest elements of the agreement that go with this. As Marcia indicated at the beginning, there's this very strong relationship between what we believe could get funded and how much development is getting approved and the nature of that development. So part of why we brought this before council, because we've kind of struggled with how to do this, to get the appropriate levels of input at the early stage from a planning perspective, but have council kind of make the policy call that basically this development project, this amount of project, it's going to yield the appropriate values. In this case, the swapping of land that's contemplated as well, the arrangement of kind of open spaces as it links to the corridor planning that we presented to you before, and the specific improvements that can be built and done, we think align sufficiently that weren't positioned to recommend that council generally endorse this broad concept and development framework for moving forward. There is nothing binding about that from a regulatory perspective, there's nothing binding about that from the development agreement that you'll eventually see, but at least gives enough guidance to administration, developer, boards, commissions, and others to know that this is the framework along which we are moving, is kind of the basic concept. I think in terms of, we've presented some different ways council can look at doing that. If you want to do something in a way of very informal, if you'd want some kind of resolution prepared, that kind of gets at the specifics of that, we could do that for you, all the way to, I think in the last memo we gave you, if you'd like something like a non-binding letter of intent to kind of articulate it real clearly that you would look at and sign off on. Any way that you would want to do that, or if it's something that you don't feel is there, or there with modifications would be appropriate, that's appropriate as well, or if it's something that you disagree with and don't think is ready to move forward, any of those kind of feedbacks, I think we're at the stage where the developer is and where we are in the reviews, that those would be appreciated.
Terry, at this point, it looks like we're looking at Phase One, that's what's been presented tonight.
That's correct.
This development agreement, are we contemplating just Phase One at this point, or will this development agreement also encompass Phase Two, which will be happening at some later point?
Yeah. We've explored whether a Phase Two option is there, we've begun to have those discussions. I think it should focus on its economics with the Phase One. Since John Shields Parkway is being built in total with Phase One, Phase Two, quite logically, should provide significant resources with regard to helping provide finishes and other improvements in the district with regard to it, because so many of the resources are going towards the initial John Shields construction, which will also be there to serve Phase Two, in other words, you don't have to build any more of that. So the anticipation is, with whatever happens on the residual sites to the east, it'll produce significant tax increment benefits that allow for a high level of completion to parks and other improvements here, as well as other district public improvements such as John Shields Parkway bridges and other elements like that. Marcia, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, with regard to the Phase Two, we are looking at, if we are to move forward with the development agreement, that we would identify Phase One and Phase Two from a standpoint of clarifying what would be funded through the TIFs. Phase One is John Shields Parkway and the internal streets associated with Phase One. Phase Two, we would discuss the issue of the incremental cost on the internal streets as well. And the Phase One and Phase Two would all be able to be used for John Shields Parkway, the park, and other additional improvements. So we are looking at adding that in, just so that we can set the parameters with regard to how the service payments are used for the project.
Okay, that makes some sense. But so do those parameters, if you will, does that sort of define what Phase Two will be?
Well, the one thing we talked about...
...the developed products?
Yeah, on Phase Two is the need that the developer needs to focus on, having some type of mixed use included. And we talked about, as we move east closer to Dublin Village Center, it makes more sense and is probably a more appropriate place for that type of mixed-use development.
Marcia, there were some significant economies in doing John Shields Parkway together with what started it, is that not accurate?
Yeah, it's correct. The larger project that we're able to do, typically you get an economy of scales, just from the standpoint of mobilization and things like that. You get better volume pricing.
Yeah, which makes sense.
Could you review again, Terry, the swapping of the land?
In essence, the developer's proposing the major north green as its major amenity. It's also providing on its sites the property needed for the John Shields Parkway green, so that in Phase One, it would be providing this green space, this green space, this green space, and this. So that's the green space contribution that it's making. The combination of those four green spaces meet the obligation for all of the housing proposed for the project, as well as a trade for these parcels here. We would be retaining this green space and this right away as part of that. Now, that's based on this level of design and drawing, we'd obviously have to look at that, has it got more detail? Does that make sense?
So the yellow is not green space, then? That would be...
No, the yellow would be, that's the piece that we'd be making available for the developer for private development on land currently owned. And then we would be getting that green space in this frontage here.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just quick, real quick, Terry. Would it be fair to say, I know at the Planning Commission and at other stages, they've talked about mixed use in the buildings, and everybody says that's just not something that's feasible.
I think in the core of this, I mean, not great planning idea. We would love for that to be able to be done, and maybe it's my, having leased out less than ideally-located retail space and being burned before. But I think talking to Casto and talking to other retail developers and market analysts, they don't think anything meaningfully non-residential could work there. Casto has talked about designing some live-work units that can have a little different presence to them as part of it, and we think that would be a great place to look at those kind of options. But we think the value of the buildings fronting on there now is so strong, especially given the size of the green space out front, that it definitely should be pursued at this point. We do think as you move farther to the east, there will be opportunities for that, as you get closer to that more commercial hub that'll be developing. Your zoning contemplates that now, and we think that makes sense to consider as part of Phase Two.
So from a practical standpoint, though, wouldn't you say that the, that large green area is most likely going to service the surrounding apartments and that population as opposed to people walking up from the river all the way up the hill to get to that park?
Yeah. Quite honestly, when staff first made recommendations here, we recommended a smaller green space there. I think both as Planning Commission, council, and others kind of saw that and what it could be in the perspectives. And I think from a, from the developer's perspective, the kind of things that could happen on two acres of open space in an urban setting like this, it's an extraordinary green space, it has to be planned and programmed moving forward. It will serve residents in this district as it develops, I think. So as you see the Pete Edwards kind of stuff that occurred farther to the east, more of that stuff happening in more intense ways down there, and other sites developing, I think you'll see it as a fairly important green space in this area. It's large enough that you could do other things there, but I think that whole design, planning, and programming piece has to be thought through.
That loop that was talked about, does that go out on the outside of Phase Two?
The loop that was talked about, this is John Shields, this is buyer Chevrolet here, goes right through John Shields Parkway. Phase Two would be up here. So the rest of the road goes on buyer Chevrolet's property that we already own through there. The developer initially tied that site up for us and assigned it, and then in exchange for that, if they do this project, has some development rights for a period of time. If they don't, then they would not be the developer of that site.
So eventually, you're seeing pedestrian traffic, if you would flow...
Yes.
...both being a draw out to the east and a draw down to the river?
Yes, I think it'll be, I think increasingly, I agree with Darren, the big amenity is going to be the River Park. But as a green within the core of this, it's a very substantial space and has obviously lots of opportunities associated with it. But I don't think it's something that draws people from other geographies.
Is that considered a city park?
Yes.
And then the Planning Commission, these diagrams that we have are by building style, so C, B, there isn't the numbers that they refer to in the minutes, but basically everything south of John Shields Parkway, they were not comfortable with? Or was it just these buildings out to the west?
Well, I think it wasn't as refined at the point before, but this was initially shown because Fred, at one point, had contemplated a dog park on this site.
Yes.
That when it was proposed, we'll put some green in the front and put a dog park in the back. I think Planning Commission had a lot of questions about, is that an appropriate place for a dog park on there? So that was entirely shown as green. I think it became less tied together in a concept, which is one reason we asked Darren to come tonight, to kind of show how it could tie together in an appropriate way. Some of these intervening streets weren't shown, so it looked like a development that was just hanging off to the west there. Those have all been provided as dedicated streets now throughout this project at all the requested locations. So I think it ties together, and if you look at it in the context of John Shields Parkway, not just as this as a project, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Now, will Graham Street go south into Sycamore Ridge?
Yeah, and that's the kind of stuff, when we get to the details of this, I think what the developer would propose is, we'll dedicate these things to you, we don't think it makes sense to build them until they're something to tie them into, we'll have to negotiate all that detailed stuff. So even when you get into building unit counts and stuff, I think those are generic on this, we're not asking for that level of detail, but overall, the number of units it represents, general placement, we think we are.
And conceptually, so that we have maybe less of an apartment complex feel, the buildings on the south side of John Shields, would there be value in making them different architecturally than the rest of this development?
I think that's certainly appropriate things to request as it goes through the approval process. Staff at some point mentioned a possibility, could they have any more height to them there as they frame these big green spaces? That's the kind of stuff as it goes through its formal review process, we're not asking for architectural sign-off other than kind of broad...
Right, I just wanted to throw that out there, so that it doesn't look like...
Yep.
It loses that apartment complex feel.
Given the level of finish the city is putting in the public improvements, I think being very concerned about the buildings that front it makes total sense.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, because of course, this grid, the way the buildings are set up around the village green, you know, are not particularly interesting-looking, but I guess that's just the way they have to be shown. These are renderings are really what we're talking about, potentially the buildings actually looking more like.
I think that's the character we'd be endorsing.
Right, okay.
Who else? Anybody else? Okay. Marcia, what are you looking for here tonight?
I think the main thing is if the issues of the overall components within the project that Terry mentioned, the number of units, the basic layout, the issue of the development agreement or potential development agreement that would include that the funds would be used for the construction of John Shields Parkway to pay for a portion of the costs associated with the internal streets based upon the level of finish that the city is requiring for those streets, also that the exchange of the parkland and the land that is the obligation of the development, that that exchange is an idea that council is comfortable with, and then the development as proposed along John Shields Parkway on the south side so that we frame the roadway as presented.
Do you have any recommendations as far as whether you'd put that into a letter of agreement or a resolution, or council? What's council's input?
Personally, I'd like to find a vehicle that it was in place so that future people know what the intention was.
I agree.
So I don't know what that legally should be, but, I mean, we're making, you know, we didn't go through these three years for nothing. You know, we really want to make sure that it's understood by everybody, this is what we want.
Well, that could be a binding letter of intent, non-binding letter of intent.
Non-binding is what we're contemplating.
I think where it probably gets...
Yeah, and one of the things we talked about was, we could bring a draft back to council at your next council meeting, give you a chance to look at it, see if you're comfortable with that, and then if you're willing to recommend that we go ahead and sign the non-binding letter to move forward.
Let's do that.
Tim, are you okay with that? Good. Everybody else?
Yeah, can I just, a couple points of clarification?
Please.
I'll try to make it very short. And I stated in the sentence here what you're asking for, an approach for the proposed land exchange, is that the one that we were talking about with these properties, the green space, the flip in there?
Yes, correct. In effect, that yellowish color we would get, we would trade in exchange for the additional green space.
That's what I thought, okay, that's fine.
And that'll be part of the documentation.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Anything else, staff?
I think that's it.
If not, then we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.